Hello, where are the... Do you have a Pledge of Allegiance?
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and welcome to the August 2nd Board of Alderman meeting. First up, we have minutes in the previous meeting, July 19th, 2021. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any alterations, corrections, grammar, anything? Hearing and seeing nothing, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. We're on to outside the rail. Chief Lovett, I will have you present now, if you would please.
All right. I'm here tonight to ask you if we can adjust the rate of pay for private duty billings for our officers at the fire department. What happens is if an individual comes to the department and needs private duty, for instance, the fairgrounds, Green Mountain Power, a contracted service, they approach us and we give them a price, and it's always been a cost-neutral situation. But because of the overtime rate now exceeding that private duty pay, I'd like to bring the officers up to what's currently outlined in that letter. So this is, the last time it was done was in 2017, to bring them up, but as time has gone on, we've kind of separated, and we need to adjust it again.
Thank you, Chief. Questions from the board? Alderman Dunges.
So just to clarify, the raise in rate in pay also would equate to a raise in rate for charging to those agencies that are requesting services?
Yeah, as we bill these out, all of the rates, workman's comp, and FICA, Medicaid, and pensions also increase.
And Chief, this is 100% paid for by the private contract?
Correct, everything.
Alderman Depoy.
What's the rate you're asking for, though?
For the deputy chiefs, we want to raise them to $60 an hour, and the lieutenants for 55.
So the regular firefighters would stay at 40 per the collective bargaining?
Yes, they negotiated that this last contract.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules that's been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make a motion to adjust the current overtime rates for the deputy chiefs and lieutenants, as stated in the memo here, for the private duty jobs that they are hired to do.
Second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions? Alderman Russo.
Chief, is there a charge for like the truck, the fuel?
Yes.
There is a charge for that?
Yep, we typically charge per the FEMA rates for each type of truck, has a different rate. Also, we charge mileage and an administration fee because I send the bill down to Don. Don processes, there's a cost involved in that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion that's been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief Lovett.
Thank you.
All right, we are still under outside the rail. Do we have members of the public who wish to address the board on items not on the agenda? Hearing and seeing none, we will move right along to communications from the mayor. Mayor LaR.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I do have several items I wanted to bring to your attention tonight. First one is what you will find on your agenda. I would ask that you remove from the table the mayoral appointment that was brought to you at the last meeting for the DPW Commissioner Jim Rotundo.
So move, second.
We have a motion that's been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move to circulate the ballot box.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to circulate the ballot box that has been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
I haven't done this in a long time.
Would you like to explain to the board members that there's tabs in their desk they can pull out a yes or a no?
So for the first time in quite some time, we are going to physically vote. What's going to happen is a little ballot box is going to come around in your desk. You should have tiny little tabs that say either yes or no. If you're in favor of the nominee, place the yes tab in the box. If you are not in favor, place the no tab in the box. If you do not have tabs, please let me know and we'll get you some.
And one vote for person.
Yeah, one vote for person. Thank you.
I didn't feel anything.
Would you like to add these up, so we can remind us of the attorney this evening?
Yes, if you'd like to go ahead, add those up.
And what we're... Now, what clerk does that? Do you have other items for us?
I can, very good, thank you very much. Yep, the second issue I wanted to bring up was, I am pleased to report to the Board of Alderman that we have finished our interviews for a new building inspector for the city of Rutland. We have identified and chosen a terrific candidate who is with us here tonight. Mark Setikursky brings over 30 years of experience in the building trades, the fire service, and his service with the Vermont Air National Guard. I am about to distribute his resume to the board. Pass it around, please. And Mark is here with a little support from Mike Brookman. So here's Mark. I told him he didn't have to say anything if you wanted, but he certainly had an opportunity to say a lot, but...
Hi, everybody.
Welcome. Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, very good. So with that, I would like to ask if you would please table the nomination to your next meeting.
So move, second.
We have a motion to table and it has been seconded. Would all those in favor please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And last two or three things, I just wanted to remind folks of some events that are coming up as I had the last couple of meetings. Tomorrow night, National Night Out, down at the Meadow Street, Monsignor Connor Park. We're hoping for a large turnout. It's going to be a beautiful evening, something we haven't had too much this summer, but I encourage everyone here in the city, if they have an opportunity to come down and support our Rutland City Police. They do a terrific job, it'll be a nice night. There'll be food, games, and all sorts of opportunity to interact with a lot of folks here in the community, so I would appreciate anyone that can to come on down. Reminder, next Wednesday night, which is, I believe, August 11th, we are holding, we the city are holding a public meeting, seeking input for helping us consider how we're going to spend the federal ARPA funds, American Rescue Plan Act funds, that's coming to the city in two tranches. I believe we have not received one quite yet, but we are about to at any point, for a total of $4.4 million. But any ideas that the public could have, or anyone that wants to come down and give us their help, please do. That is next Wednesday night, 7:00, down at the Rutland Recreation Community Center located at CSJ. And then finally, I wanted to let the board know that at your next regular board meeting two weeks from tonight, I have asked the Assistant Attorney General for the State of Vermont, Josh Diamond, to come down and give us a briefing on the opioid litigation settlement. There is a considerable amount of money that's coming to the state of Vermont, and each community has an opportunity to weigh in on that and receive some of that funding. And we, I have let them know that we are more than welcome, are more than happy to receive some of that for, you know, obviously, a problem that we've had and the nation has had for a long time. So anyway, right at the beginning of the meeting at your next board meeting, so that's all I've got tonight.
Thank you, Mayor LaR. Any questions for the mayor before we let him go? Seeing none, thank you again. Mark, thank you for being here, I'm sure you'll hear from many of us over the next two weeks. And then before we move on, we have the final vote total for DPW Commissioner. 11 in favor, zero opposed. Congratulations, Commissioner Jim Rotundo.
Well, I just wanted to quickly thank the board for all your support, I really appreciate it, and I want you to know that. I've really enjoyed working with the board over the last six or seven years, and I look forward to several more years working with you. And I think just to close, I think we've, you know, over the last six, seven years, we've made a lot of improvements to our infrastructure, and the job's not done. We've got a lot more to do, and I look forward to working as a team and getting it done. So again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and again, congratulations. So we are moving on to additions and deletions to the agenda, of which we do have a handful. I'll start first with the additions. We need to add a second-class liquor license for CNS wholesale grocers under the Board of Control Commissioners. We have two special event permits to add, and a report of a representative, Alderman Dunges, the Planning Commission, as well as, I believe, one deletion. Attorney Blumer, are you on the phone with us?
Not yet, we have the call-in for him.
Attorney Blumer's not yet on the phone with us. I believe he does have one deletion, though, which would be...
It's the pending litigation.
Pending litigation, one of our pending litigations. All right, so I hope you caught all that, we have five things, if I could get a motion to make those adjustments.
So move, second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Any questions, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, we are on to reports and letters from department heads and officials. Attorney Blumer will be moved to the end, as they are executive sessions. So first, DPW Commissioner Rotundo, a request for referrals, page one of your packet.
Okay, so I'm asking for two referrals tonight, and this is really to give the board an update on two very big projects. And the first one is the combination pond, Piedmont Pond Empoundment Modification Project. And the second project is the water meter replacement project. So again, I'd like to refer those to the DPW Committee and then be able to give you an in-depth update on both those subjects.
So move to refer.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to refer, and it has been seconded. Any discussion, debate, questions? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Very good, thank you. All right, we are now on to Treasurer Markowski, request for referral to Finance Committee, the LAS fiscal year '22 budget. Treasurer Markowski.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think Treasurer Markowski just wanted to make sure it hit the agenda as we had heard from LAS, who's ready to present the budget to the city, so I'm going to refer that to the Finance Committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, that brings us to reports of standing committees. First up, Alderman Depoy, Recreation Committee. Alderman Depoy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, on July 20th, the Recreation Committee met in Main Street Park between 5:30 and 6:00, and the members that were present were myself, Alderman Savage, Neary and Talbot, and then other Aldermen that were there, were also Gillum and Franco. We had Kim Peters and Tyler DeLean from the Rec Department, we had Dave Wallstrom, John Padone, and Grant Adams from the Rutland Recreation Foundation. Is that the full name of it, is that...
Parks Foundation.
Parks Foundation, thank you. So the committee heard from Tyler and Kim as to the current state of the Main Street Park, the bandstand gazebo. The bandstand's been shut down since it was determined that the structure was unsafe for use at this time. Barriers have been set up and signs posted to alert the public that the bandstand is undergoing renovations or replacement in the near future. Tyler went under the structure and took pictures, in which he and engineering consultants determined that the support structure under the floor has degraded to an unsafe condition. The structure is approximately 110 years old and has had some renovations and repairs over the years, but it will probably cost nearly the same to renovate the structure as it would to fully replace it. A small sample survey was done, asking people if replacement with a more modern structure would be preferable, and it was. Modern lighting, speaker systems, and ADA compliance were among the goals of a replacement structure. The committee also got to talking about other infrastructure improvements at the park, and restrooms were on the list of wants and needs at the park. A possible location being the area of the old Welcome Center that used to stand over by the corner of Main and West Street. On a motion by Alderman Talbot, he recommended to the full board that we approve of the Rec Department and the Recreation Parks Foundation developing a concept design for the bandstand and associated infrastructure improvements, and to develop strategies for funding the costs of a new structure and associated infrastructure improvements. The motion passed on a vote of four to zero, and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion that has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions? Hearing and seeing none, would all those in... Or Kim, do you have something first?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
Thank you. I did want to just follow up from that meeting, we were, the Rec Department was given a project basically to start, looking at where we go from here. We're looking at the VORAC grants, we've created a committee consisting of myself, Nikki Adams, a program director, Tyler Dolan, our Director of Facilities, Dave Wallstrom, Parks Foundation, Grant Adams, Parks Foundation, John Padone, Parks Foundation, Devin Neary as Rutland Regional Planning Commission, also Board of Alderman, Tom Depoy as Board of Alderman, and Rich Sweet from the Historical Band, and Katie Feeney, an intern with us, and a volunteer. So we will be looking for about two or three more to join this committee, that's going to help our VORAC grant strong. The first letter of interest is due the end of this month, I feel very strong, I feel like we have a great application. VORAC stands for Vermont Outdoor Recreation Economic Collaborative. And one other comment I just wanted to make, our reservations have gone out the roof. We are, we've had over 100 reservations in our parks, and the number one thing they ask for is where can we have electricity and where can we have bathrooms? So we've been putting them to Rotary Park, that was a newly renovated space, it's great. I'm super excited about this project, it's going to be a lot of work, but keeping this board, you know, very up to date of what's going on is really important to us, so that's all I have. If any has any questions.
Excellent, thank you Superintendent Peters. Are there any... Oh, Alderman Russo.
I was just going to say that the night you guys revealed it, I was yelling, you know, how to keep it as original as possible, and Sammy being the way he is, but today I had an extensive conversation with Brad Morgan from Satin and Steel, I've known him forever, and he gave me a piece of his mind about how it's like the worst place in the world to play, how they need to do something more like an amphitheater, brought up bathrooms, brought up more accessibility for bands and all that, and how if you're in that round place, you can't play in a 360-degree way, how you, no matter where you're set up, you're going to eliminate 180 degrees of the crowd, and I'm going, gee, Brad, you better stay in touch with what's going on with that, and maybe put your input and other bands' input, whatever, so I don't know if I'm eating my own words, but somehow if we can eat our cake and have it too, would be neat, but, you know, it's still nice to have that kind of facility, but then again, the bathrooms too, I know that's always been an issue too, but good luck with it, and it would be nice to be able to satisfy all concern, but Brad does bring up some very interesting sights to it, and the restrooms are going to be important to it, so, but thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Russo. Alderman Depoy.
So on the restrooms front, we, you know, there was the old Chamber of Commerce Welcome Center that was out there by the corner, and they had a bathroom in there, and I imagine that the infrastructure, the water and the sewer are probably still there, probably, you know, it's going to have to be some upgrades, of course, to it and everything, but it's on a slab, it's ground level, I mean, it should be easy to put in some kind of a restroom facility that's ADA compliant and everything else too, so, and it's right there, right in close proximity to the bandstand, so I think we can make something like that work.
Be wonderful.
Yeah.
It'd be great.
Thank you, Alderman Depoy. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion that has been seconded. Would all those in favor please say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Alderman Depoy, thank you Superintendent Peters. All right, we are on to Alderman Neary for Charter and Ordinance Committee. Alderman Neary.
Thank you. On July 21st, 2021, the Rutland City Charter and Ordinance Committee met. Members present were Alderman Neary, Alderman Gillum, and Alderman Wickham, others present, Alderman Dunges, Attorney Blumer, Judy Fraser, Dave Bishop, manager of Price Shopper, and Rob Whalen, manager of Tops Markets. This was the second meeting regarding abandoned shopping carts in the city of Rutland. The meeting began by reviewing the minutes from the May 20th, 2021 Charter and Ordinance Committee meeting. At that meeting, the committee discussed that the current ordinance, Chapter 4, circa 2009, was ineffective due to the lack of enforcement and a resulting lack of compliance, especially from Walmart. The committee voted to send a letter to businesses near and adjacent to the downtown district requesting a representative attend the July 21st, 2021 meeting. Businesses requested were Price Shopper, Walmart, Tops, and two Dollar General locations. The city was able to obtain contact information for every business and did, but did not send a certified letter. Walmart and Dollar General of the one location did not respond to the letter. The committee then heard directly from the two businesses present at the meeting. Currently, Price Shopper has an individual collecting abandoned shopping carts twice a week, Tuesdays and Fridays. Price Shopper does utilize a wheel-locking cart retention system that is not currently operational, but is planning to install a new system in the near future. They stated they were willing to increase the collection cycle by three to four times per week until the system is replaced. They explained that the retention systems can be deactivated by tampering with the friction brake mechanism. The system is a large expense to the business, but so is the loss of carts, and the business estimates that when operational, the system retains up to 75% of carts. They did state that it would be beneficial to both businesses and the city to have a working ordinance, and the city should cite those taking carts, or the cycle will continue. There are also perimeter signs around the property informing customers not to remove the carts and that the wheels will lock beyond that point. They also detailed that the business would soon be offering personal pull-behind carts for around $25 each, and are expected to be available by August 1st. Alderman Neary asked if Price Shopper tracks where and how many carts are removed from the property weekly. They stated that they did not track that data, but could easily backlog and provide data to the city. Alderman Dunges asked if Price Shopper tracked which carts were taken off the property. They answered that they did not, but are able to identify Price Shopper carts visually and often find carts at hotspots around the city from repeat offenders. Alderman Dunges asked if a citizen could call and request a pickup, and they responded that they get calls approximately five per week and will retrieve those call, or carts immediately after the call. They did state that if the city and business both do their parts, the problem would potentially go away. Alderman Gillum thanked Mr. Bishop for attending and stated that he has seen more Blue or Walmart carts throughout the city and felt that Price Shopper was much less part of the problem. Alderman Gillum did ask if Price Shopper picked up other businesses' carts, and they responded that they did not. The committee then heard from Tops Markets. Tops indicated that they drive around daily, collecting shopping carts, especially from the TV bank parking lot and other hotspots. Tops also received daily calls reporting abandoned shopping carts and immediately retrieved those carts. They did say that citing offenders would not solve the issue because they are unable to pay and did not seem to care about the consequences. Alderman Neary asked whether Tops or Price Shopper had noticed an increase in abandoned shopping carts since the pandemic. Both responded yes, and that they had noticed an increased theft of hand baskets, stating that the issue is chain-wide and Price Shopper would go through two to three cases of baskets per week. Alderman Dunges asked if they were seeing the issue in other stores around the country, but responded that Rutland City was an outlier and carts were considered transportation for offenders. Alderman Neary agreed and hoped new initiatives such as public transit and walk-to-shop pilot would help to supplement the issue. Alderman Neary asked if there are company-wide discussions about the issue, both responded that it was not a conversation at a corporate level at that time. Alderman Wickham stated that he appreciated the efforts by the two businesses present, especially personal carts for sale, but admitted that it would be unlikely that the offenders would in fact purchase those carts. Alderman Dunges mentioned a recent committee referral regarding the ordinance enforcement officer, which could assist with direct outreach and education as well as enforcement. The committee then discussed a potential update to the ordinance. Attorney Blumer referenced an example of a recent ordinance update from another community that includes a cart plan mandate. Alderman Wickham made a motion to recommend a referral to Attorney Blumer and Judy Fraser to draft an update to the current shopping cart ordinance with a provision requiring individual cart plans, retention systems, cart retrieval, as well as updates to enforcement and the fee schedule. That was approved by unanimous vote. The shopping cart issue will remain in committee while Attorney Blumer and Judy Fraser work on a draft update to the current shopping cart ordinance.
Thank you. Alderman Gillum.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to thank Alderman Neary for taking the minutes and running the meeting. I had to leave town, I was on the phone from Eden, Vermont, and I couldn't get here in time, so I thank the committee for their indulgence, and I thank the Vice Chair for doing the report.
Thank you, Alderman Gillum, and thank you, Alderman Neary. Any other questions, discussion? Hearing none, thank you. We're on to reports of select committees, of which we have none. Brings us to reports of representatives. Up first, we have Alderman Talbot, Downtown Rutland Partnership.
Thank you. The Downtown Rutland Partnership Board met on Tuesday, July 20th, at 8:00 a.m., and the following updates were shared. Related to Streetscape, Joe Sharpe's, former owner of Strange Fellows Pub, has been hired as the new Streetscape Coordinator. On Saturday, August 21st, as part of Orientation Weekend, a group of Castleton University students will be performing community service in downtown Rutland, assisting with weeding sidewalks, removing trash, and various repainting projects. New pole banners and trash can inserts have been printed and are being distributed throughout downtown. As part of the Center Street scoping study, consulting firm Dubois &amp; King held the first community forum with Center Street business owners. The next forum will be held on August 9th via Zoom and is open to all downtown Rutland business and property owners, city officials, and city stakeholders. Public input will be collected at a booth on August 28th at the Parade of Heroes and Community Celebration. Designs for new wayfinding science have been sent to the Council on Historic Preservation for approval. A notice of approval is expected to be received this month, and they're aiming for September installation. Marketing updates, the hiring search for a new marketing and events coordinator continues. A Downtown Rutland display has been installed at the Guilford Welcome Center off Interstate 91 near the New Hampshire border. The center receives 2,000 visitors per day. New mural, sculpture, and brand advertising rack cards have been printed and distributed to new locations such as the Castleton Student Center and the Amtrak Station. 1,000 were distributed to each Vermont Welcome Center for display. The Downtown Rutland Shopping Flyer has been completed and distributed to participating businesses. It lists all retailers and their hours and includes a map. It should say 7,500 flyers have been ordered to promote shopping locally. The DRP is working with Hannah Duxton on a new brand photography to use on the DRP website. And then finally, the DRP has accepted a proposal from Bent Media out of Milton, Vermont, to create 160-second video, two 30-second commercials, and two 15-second edits for social media and YouTube with the theme of "Secret Identity of Rutland," highlighting the downtown district as a vibrant place for visiting, exploring, dining, and shopping. They will be shooting footage in late August and attending Friday Night Lights on September 10th to get footage to use for these spots for the next several years. Events updates, Friday Night Live will be held on September 10th and September 24th. The DRP is working on finalizing vendors and street layout. There will be a significant number of new businesses participating, including... There'll be a significant number of new businesses participating, including two food trucks, a face painting booth, and a pop-up from Green Spell Plant Shop, which will be opening its new storefront in downtown later this year. The DRP is working with Cedar Come Alive Outside and the Paramount Theater on the Parade of Heroes and Community Celebration scheduled for Saturday, August 28th. It will begin at noon with sidewalk sales leading up to the parade at 4, followed by a Friday Night Live-style concert at 6, and fireworks after dark. The DRP is currently working with Darkside to secure a skate ramp for inclusion in the event. The DRP is also working to prepare for the Whoopi Pie Festival on Saturday, October 9th, and is currently in the process of securing sponsors. One business development update, the DRP awarded a $2,000 grant to Diamonds &amp; More to assist with their facade renovation and window replacement.
Thank you very much, Alderman Talbot. Any questions, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we will move on, thank you again. This brings us to Alderman Dungeons, Planning Commission update.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Planning Commission met on July 7th, 14th, and July 28th. Typically, the Planning Commission only meets two times per month, however, with the influx of new commission members and a deadline for a draft revision of the updated zoning bylaws, a few extra meetings may be added to the schedule as was reflected in July. Currently, the primary focus of the Planning Commission is to review the new draft zoning bylaws each week in detail. We are working through the document, chapter by chapter, drilling down into the detail of each section. Topics such as which areas of the city are zoned as residential, gateway districts, downtown districts, and the impacts of those decisions are being discussed at each meeting. There are many types of zones, and each one with its own set of rules and guidelines to help shape the look and feel for the city. Items such as which zones the Architectural Review Committee should be focused on, as well as what level of responsibility the zoning administrators should hold for approving plans and designs are being discussed as well. One important piece of discussion is around form-based codes and how they can help the city by setting clear guidelines for building appearances, architectures, in specific districts. The focus around setting the form-based codes now makes for a much cleaner decision-making process when the new building designs are presented to the city in the future, once these bylaws are in place. In short, right now, the Planning Commission is working hard to help design what the future of Rutland City may look like in 20 years. In the near future, the Commission will look to both the Rutland City Board of Aldermen and the citizens of Rutland City for feedback on the draft that is currently underway. In the meantime, if anyone would like to join a Planning Commission meeting to better understand the process or to give public comment, the meeting schedule and location information can be found on the Rutland City website on our meeting calendar.
Thank you, Alderman Dungeons. Any questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, thank you again for the update. Brings us to petitions, letters, miscellaneous communication. We have a special event permit request, Parade of Heroes, Sidewalk Sales, August 28th, Merchants Row. These are pages two through seven of your packet.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
I have a motion to suspend, it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval of Parade of Heroes and Community Celebration to be held August 28th from 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion or debate or questions on this?
I just have a question, and maybe of the clerk that nobody has signed off on...
So, in regards to the insurance, Attorney Blumer resolved today. This request is basically just kind of hopping on the Parade of Heroes. It just was actually to include Merchants Row, Alderman Davis, in regards, so it was the same format that was already approved for Lyle Jepson. Heidi from the Partnership just, you know, noted that there was a lot of requests, so it kind of grew a little bit, went into the Merchants Row aspect of it, but Judy has seen the insurance, it fulfills the obligations. Attorney Blumer's in tomorrow, he's not feeling well today. He will sign off on that.
I just didn't know if you needed to move it based on receipt of signatures.
That's fine, and you're going to see these other ones as well, may not have signatures too.
Very good. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion, it has been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, up next, Clerk Heck, do they have a copy of these permits that came there?
Yes, I believe everyone does on their desk, yes.
Okay, perfect. So the first addition, we will take on Vermont State Fair 175th Anniversary Parade.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, and it has been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval for the Vermont State Fair 175th Anniversary Parade to be held August 17th from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, or questions?
Mr. Condon's here, I don't know if he...
Are there any questions? Hearing and seeing none, we have a motion, it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, thank you for being here.
Thank you all for your support. I will leave, I didn't bring my stat picking up everybody, but I do have some publication I'll need to exit at the time of your executive session. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, up next, we have Stomping Out Stigma, Turning Point Fundraiser.
I'll move to suspend the rules.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the rules, it has been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
And I'll move for the approval of Stomping Out Stigma Turning Point Fundraiser to be held September 9th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in Main Street Park.
Second.
Right, we have a motion, and it has been seconded. Is there any discussion, debate, questions on this? Alderman Gillum.
Pending signatures, may I correct?
Pending signatures, yes. All right, hearing and seeing nothing. We have a motion, and it has been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. This brings us to Board of Control Commissioners, of which we have one thing.
I'll move to go into the Board of Control Commissioners.
Second.
Right, we have a motion to enter the Board of Control Commissioners, it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we are now in the Board of Control Commissioners. So what we have is a second-class liquor license request from CNS Wholesale Grocers.
I'll move to circulate for signature.
Oh, I don't believe anyone has a copy of this, this came in today. So Clerk Heck, if you want to speak at all to it?
Basically, what this says is Tops Market is in the development of turning over, and CNS wholesalers, I'm not sure who they are.
Broadbrow. Broadbrow in Massachussetts.
Okay. They're looking to get a second-class application. Tops is currently good, I guess they're kind of dotting their i's and getting their t's ready to be crossed here in regards to a potential transition to this company. So, it's really not a huge deal at this point in time, but they have requested a business license, and their second-class liquor license to sell beer and wine up there, as far as that goes. The whole application's here, you can take a look at it. I apologize, I got hit with like 14 different additions and deletions today and forgot to make copies of these for you folks.
So we did have a motion, did we get a second? Got a second?
Standing.
So a motion has been seconded. Is there any discussion, questions, thoughts on this? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries.
I'll move to go out of the Board of Control Commissioners.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to exit, and it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We are out of the Board of Control Commissioners, and we are on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? Hearing and seeing none, we're on to miscellaneous motions, resolutions, and new business. Alderman DePoy.
So, Mr. President, it's been a while since we've checked in on the septic rates that the city collects from septic being dumped at the city sewer plant. I think I'd like to refer to the Public Works Committee, the issue of septic rates, so we can take a look at those, see if we're keeping up with the times, see what, you know, the septic rates around the county are, you know, what our competition looks like. I think that, you know, if we're charging the right amount, we can generate revenue for our sewer rates, for the ratepayers here in the city, and, you know, and other ratepayers around this area that use the sewer plant, maybe possibly help to alleviate some of the strain of paying those bills. So, I'd like to refer that to the Public Works Committee.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded, to refer to the Public Works Committee, a review of septic rates. Is there any questions, discussion, comments? Hearing and seeing none, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We're still under miscellaneous motions, resolutions, new business. Is there anything else from anyone? If not, we do have two executive sessions. Attorney Blumer was so kind to send me the language. So up first, we have a motion to find the premature general public knowledge regarding negotiation of a labor relations agreement would clearly place the city at a substantial disadvantage because the discussion will divulge the board's position on agreement provisions to be negotiated.
So move. Second.
Right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So we're looking for a motion to enter into executive session with the inclusion of the mayor, police chief, treasurer, clerk, and city attorney to discuss the labor relations agreement as allowed under Title I, Section 313a, Subsection 1b.
So move.
We have a motion, and it has been seconded. With all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. We will enter into executive session.